Session to order for Monday, September 27th. We will now have a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get into public comment, I have to announce that we had an executive session after our last meeting on September 13th to discuss personnel and real estate. With that, we will open the floor for public comment. If anybody would like to address council, you may do so by dialing the number on the screen. And please give your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, we will close the floor for public comment and get into our first discussion item for the night, eligible debt refinancing.
Okay, one of the items that's included with the agenda tonight relates to, you'll see it says, Concord Public Finance. It's a listing of debt that's eligible to be refinanced. That would include everything from our 2016 debt issuance, 2015, and 2019. If you look in the far right-hand column, you would see that the total savings estimate at this point would be about two, just over 2%. Now, that fluctuates. I've received about four of these within the last month, and it's gone as high as like 2.93% savings down to right about just below this. So this is towards the low end of the spectrum. But the idea behind this is that we don't, the refunded debt would not be, or the refunded debt would be, of course, paid off. We would issue new debt at a lower rate for the same term. So we're not going to go out any further. It only goes out to the term that would match the debt that's being refunded. The real benefit of this is that next year, if you look on the far right-hand column, you can see that next year we could look at a savings of about almost $319,000 in debt service, you know, which is, if you look down, if you look down that list below that, you can see that there's other savings in subsequent years, but most of it's like right out of the gate, savings on debt service that would be very, very helpful, of course. I don't mean to be Captain Obvious, but you know, that's something that we absolutely need is any type of savings that we can have in terms of our debt service. We had originally put in here a series 2017. We found out after further research that that's not eligible to be refinanced until later next year. So the idea is probably later next year, we'll go out for borrowing for capital needs in the subsequent two years. And we would probably just include any eligible refinancing in that whole issuance. So that way, we don't have to pay two separate costs of issuance. At any rate, I just, the idea here then would be, if you're all in agreement, that we would introduce an ordinance at our October meeting, first, the first reading for borrowing, and then would go through the process between now and closing. We would go through a process that would include looking at options for the borrowing. So that could be bond issue, or it could be bank financing. Most likely, it'll be bond issue, but we also, we want to look at every possible opportunity for, you know, the loan, or the debt issuance, I should say, which would, could include a bank loan. So we're looking at that. And then we would intend to finalize the ordinance, you know, on November the 8th, at the November the 8th meeting, and then thereafter enter into a closing on the debt. So what I'm looking for from council tonight is any questions you might have about what I've given you or the process that I've outlined, and then kind of a go-ahead to enter into this debt refund, refunding.
What depicts eligibility?
So when debt's issued, and it could be, what we're talking about here, I believe, for example, the issue that we talked about, 2017, it was a bond issue.
Yeah.
And those bonds aren't callable until a certain time. And that really depends on any different, any different issuance that we have. They're all different, and you have to look at, kind of dig down into them to find out, okay, is this eligible for refinancing? Because we, on the face of it, it looked like that 2017's issuance was, but you know, upon further review, we found out that it really wasn't callable until next year, I think in October, so.
Thanks.
Sure.
So Omar, this would result in a savings to the city of about $379,000, then?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, and again, most of that would be, or could be, realized in next year's debt service payments.
Omar, item six and item seven here, estimated issuance cost, estimated municipal bond insurance cost, are those essentially a closing cost for us to refinance?
Well, yeah, in essence, they are. They're also paying the financial advisor, paying the bond attorney, paying the banks involved. Yeah, there's a...
So the cost on that's about $311,000 with proposed present value and reduction of interest rate being about 378, so the savings would be the difference of about, I mean, if I'm looking at a true cost standpoint, there's going to be money, money out to do this, some kind, so really, we're looking at about $68,000 savings.
Well, that's all part, you're all, that's all included in the savings. So, yeah, you're paying that, but that's wrapped into, it's like, I'm trying to give a decent analogy, like, let's say you refinance your house, I mean, there's going to be costs involved in that. But the bottom line is, in order to do that, you're going to save money, or you wouldn't go through the process. So even with all the costs of issuance, you still end up with about a 2% overall savings on the debt that's being issued, or the debt that's being refunded, I should say.
Okay.
Do you understand, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. And you're saying that we're not extending the payback period on this? So whatever, wherever we are in the payment schedule is where we're just going to pick up, but presumably at a lower rate?
Right, exactly, and the term is the same, so. And you can see the listing of debt service and how that is affected in every out year, not just next year, but subsequent years, all the way through 2033, which is the last year on any of these debts, current debts. Sure. Any other questions?
Does this affect the term on the current debt at all? I mean, does this reduce the term at all? Is it just reducing the interest?
So we're, yes, just in reducing the interest. We're going to mirror with any, with the issuance that we're going to have, the term that we have, these projections, I should say, are based on that. So we're not going to go out further, you know, in term, in terms of years after, whenever the current debt is due. And for any of that debt, that the longest term runs out to 2033, and that's why that's listed there in the far left-hand column. Does that make sense?
Thank you. So again, the mechanics on this, we have to, what was the timeframe for introducing this then?
So we would introduce it at the next council meeting, the October 12th meeting. And then we would adopt it at the November 8th council meeting. At least, that's, that's the projection right now.
And then our new budget for 2022 would reflect that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody have anything else about debt refinancing? All right, move on to ARPA recommendations.
Okay, so I had forwarded to you all a while back the exhaustive list of RP, ARPA funding requests. What, what I re-formatted this, and what I, what you have in front of you is the re-formatted version, which includes in the first, on the first page, all of the quantified amounts. So we received a number of requests that provided an amount that they were requesting, but most of them just requested that certain things, certain actions be taken, or certain funding items be reviewed. So as you see on the first page, we've received requests from the Altoona Blair County Development Corporation for an extensive amount of money to provide economic development opportunities, business expansion and retention, and creation efforts. And the idea would be expansion of the tax base at its core, but also addressing those items that the ARPA funds are supposed to be identified for, which is to address some of the downturn of, associated with the pandemic. We see, received a minor request from the Altoona Parking Authority for their, to reimburse them for lost revenue. We received a request from Blair County Chamber Foundation as well. And you'll see that amount's identified there. We received a request from Pat Miller at Gadek for a contribution towards various activities in the city's downtown, again, a very minor amount. Any of you that attended the second public meeting that we had to discuss, you know, ARPA, you may recall Jared Frederick had requested a significant amount of money to contribute towards the railroaders memorial museum upgrades. And the spreadsheet provides some, some of the specifics that he identified, you know, including windows, windows roof repair, really, a lot of the, the building that, that would, that he has, and I guess folks on the board have identified as in need of the upgrade. The next item that has a, you know, a number attached to it relates to the Rose Hill Cemetery and the requests for contributions towards, I think it's, it's, was termed, used to rescue the city's cemeteries. Again, not, not a large amount. There was a larger amount requested in a similar, but, but yet different item on various cemeteries, Rose Hill, Fairview, and Oak Ridge Cemeteries, a larger request for funding. Again, you know, another, another request from a different person related to Rose Hill Cemetery funding. And we put in, that was provided, a minimum and a maximum request. The amount that you see here provided is the maximum amount. Recently, the mayor and I met with Timothy Dieter, who represents Football Club 814, related to the, what is now the Keith Athletic Field, or what was the Keith Athletic Field, for improvements up to an amount equal to about $3 million. And we also have identified a grant match coworking space, grant for the Mill Project that's listed there. Total of all those requests is, comes in at about $45.6 million. As you know, that exceeds, just those requests right there exceed this, you know, the amount that the city has received and is expected to receive from the American Rescue Plan Act. Beyond that, in the next four and a half pages are a number of requests, again, that don't have a dollar and sets amount associated with it, but I can, I can kind of generalize what some of those are. We have a request from the Blair County Historical Society related to maintenance of Baker Mansion. And we have a request related to building a new community swimming pool. The Juniata Civics Association has requested funding in relation to also replacing revenue they lost and upgrading facilities. Demolitions of a house, street repair, expansion of broadband. This is something that we had, we saw a presentation by a group from council about, about that. An assistance to the local hospitality and tourism industries. Grants for public, excuse me, blighted property, lost revenue associated with AMED, gateway and street scape projects along 6th, 7th, and 8th avenues from 9th Street to 5th Street. More, more requests related to cemeteries. We had, we had a request at one of the, I think it was the first meeting we, public meeting we had, related to bringing tourism to the city and creating some sort of walking and biking trails. We had a lot of, as, again, particularly at the first public meeting, we had quite a few folks talking about the flooding in the Pleasant Valley area specifically. And I know as someone who obviously attended those meetings, it was, you know, a little bit heart-wrenching to listen to some of the stories of the recurrent flooding in Pleasant Valley. 21st Avenue flooding. We also, you know, obviously had some problems there with flooding recently. 23rd Avenue flooding. More Pleasant Valley flooding. Moving over to the third page, page three. Again, many more items related to flooding in the Pleasant Valley area from those that attended the first meeting, or the first public meeting. The second meeting brought more issues related to flooding. They were more, more specific to the area on the Mill Run, again, behind Terrace Drive, people that living, living along there that have suffered greatly from, from flooding, at least according to their testimony. On to page four. Flooding is the highlight of that page. Again, Mill Run, Pleasant Valley, high-speed internets also at the bottom of that page, and the request to, you know, devote some funding towards providing that opportunity in the community. And then over on the last page, you know, we had more, more requests for money related to the cemeteries and upkeep of the cemeteries and possible coordination with, you know, with a group that, that is involved with maintenance of these cemeteries, possible coordination with a grant for that purpose. We also had someone that came into our second public meeting that discussed or mentioned skateboarding parks and how that we could, you know, a recreational opportunity that many in the community may take advantage of. Then also, you know, we, we talked with the owner of the Mill Project, who is interested in acquisition of adjacent properties for what he considers to be the best interests of the mill. So that's a real high-level review of some of the requests that we've had. If anybody would like to talk about any of them with more specificity, I'd be glad to do that. And maybe I'll turn it over to you folks to see where you would like to go in terms of discussions related to ARPA.
Can you remind us again when decisions need to be made by?
Well, decisions don't need to be made by any particular point. However, we do have about $39 million worth of federal funds that are either we have or are coming our way, that we would, you know, is available for a variety of purposes and projects in the community. And it has to be spent, it has to be assigned by the end of 2024, and with, with completion of any projects related to that by the end of 2026.
You know, one of the concerns I have, and you know, we saw some of this in the news with the authority and the Bellwood Dam, and, you know, recently at the Amtran Board Meeting with, with costs that are, you know, far greater than what was anticipated. And I think anybody, even on a personal level, if you've, you know, either hired a contractor or bought building materials on your own, the cost of that, I'm just worried about, well, one is the cost, because these, any project we do is going to cost a lot more than it would have a couple, you know, just very recently, because of supply, because of COVID, because of the shortage of workers. And two, everybody trying to do these projects all at the same time across the country, you know, the, the odds of being able to complete something in that short a timeframe, you know. So I think part of our discussion has to be, are we going to wait? Are we going to move and try to, if we're going to have any projects that need to be done, are we going to try to move forward on that quickly, to try to get at the front of the line? You know, because I don't know if they're going to extend any of those deadlines or not, because you can't, you know, get the project completed.
That's, that's good points, and yeah, I would agree. Some of the things we know that are definite needs would be in the stormwater category. And thankfully, we even do have a successful project from what we did a couple of years ago on 39th Street area there, and, and that proved to certainly help the neighborhood there. And so I'd like to see sooner rather than later, seeing some of these stormwater projects come to fruition and prioritize the areas that were discussed there.
I would be, if I may, I'm in agreement with Councilman Butterball on that point, but I think that, I think we need to have a better idea, dollar-wise, what we're looking at as far as that, because, I mean, I don't want to commit $40 million to just stormwater infrastructure.
Agreed.
I think there has to be a trade-off here on us trying to economically enhance the city's viability for the future.
Well, I think, boy, there's, where do you want to start? This is like, you know, trying to eat the elephant.
It's not easy, is it?
I mean, I'm, you know, I guess, I think we maybe need to establish a timeline for decision-making. I think we need to look at, are there things within city government and the structure of city government that any of this money can be used for stability? And, and, you know, what is that going to do? Because that's going to alleviate a burden on taxpayers right away. And then, you know, you know, one of the things I'll say about the process, and I was at, I was at both meetings, I really didn't hear any bad ideas. I mean, I think they were all good ideas and things that we would all say the city needs. And I think that, that somehow we need to maybe look at trying to address pretty much all of those, all of those issues in one way or another, whether it's this money or something, something else that we do. Flooding was, was prevalent everywhere we went, and it's, it's, it's been an ongoing problem, continues to get worse. And as I look at it, you know, we have three, three divisions of flooding problems. You've got streams and creeks or tributaries. We've got issues with stormwater and being able to handle the current, you know, stormwater system, being able to handle it. And then you also have a third issue of sores backing up into people's basements and properties, because we have areas that are overloaded where the system isn't separated. I mean, I think the cemetery issue is important.
Yes.
I don't know that it's, it's something that this money is going to be used for, but it's, they're all in the city of Altoona, and it's almost a blight issue and can lend itself to crime and other things, and trash being dumped there, and it's, it's, it's an eyesore. And so I think there's some things that even if we don't use the ARP money, or we can't use it for, because again, I don't think it's going to go that far as, as much as we'd like to. You know, can we develop some, some strategies to deal with some of these issues long-term? But I think first thing is, is a timeframe when we're going to make some decisions on this. And if we're going to have projects, that we try to get them done early, before everybody's thing gets jammed up.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I also think, I think that it's hard to say what we're going to use the money on, because there's a lot of unknowns still with a lot of stormwater work that Nate is having, our engineering firms do for us, you know. So Nate, do you, do you know a timeframe on, on when the various projects that you requested, that they look at, will be ready?
The city manager asked me to prepare a list of, like, I don't know if you want to call it top 10 or top 15, top 20, but we have some right now that we have in design. We have some that are slip linings, 17th Street, like, I have a gun night project down in Kettle Street area. I mean, those are just, you tell me to go, I can go. They're ready, they're in the barrel. We have a project that's sitting on a shelf. It, it can be bid. We have a few that are in design right now, so they're probably next year. The bigger, so I would say this year, you're probably, you know, for the end of this year, we may be able to push out a million bucks next year. I don't want to say too much, but we probably have a million or two that we could push out next year. Pleasant Valley because of permitting, because of sort of running some heavy-duty engineering, engineering... Pleasant Valley because of permitting, because of sort of running some heavy-duty engineering analysis on the drainage areas that contribute to that area. We probably won't be into any type of project till after the fall, probably '23, just, so we get the study done, we kind of look at whether or not, you know, two or three basins or taking a bridge out or, you know, some combination of what that does to the stream elevations in relation to the flooding. So if we put in five million dollars worth of things, things, you know, the creek can only go down this far, so that's not a real great use of money. So that's kind of where we're at right now. We're kind of putting a lot of money up front to get through that portion of it and then we can see. So, I mean, the way I see it rolling out is you have like a little bit this year, a little bit more next year with some of the stuff that we already have in the planning phases or have started before we had this money. So your heavy burden stuff is probably looking at construction-ready '23, '24, but, you know, the design, the design aspects of those projects, you know, we should probably know sooner than later, you know, of where we go. Because you probably have at least a year, you probably have a year on some of these bigger designs even, you know, Broad Avenue, Twenty-Second Street, any one of those types of projects that you pick, two to three million dollar range, you have probably a year to get design and permitting done, so.
Well, and you know, what's a two to three million dollar project going to cost now? It's, you know, how much?
That's a great question.
You know, and I guess I have to, so we're, so that we're not confused, that others aren't confused trying to understand this. You do, prior to the ARP money, you had some design projects going on that we had in the budget.
Correct.
Right. So did we have, besides, did we have money beyond the design phase of that?
Some of these we did, some of these, well, some of them we just identified as design only, some of them we have identified as, you know, funding, construction funding too. So we have, we have some.
Okay.
And some of it we've identified to use liquid fuels for, so we could pull that back to use towards paving and then use, you know, this money towards drainage or, you know, sewer or water, whatever you choose to.
I think it would be good to know what's, what projects we've got already on, in design before we start to go further with any more, you know, looking at allocating any money for any of this.
I think it's hard, too, to appropriate money towards projects when the engineering work is not back yet, you know what I mean?
Sure, because you just don't know what you're talking, you know, dollar-wise what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I mean, we've gotten pretty good with, you know, we have a million bucks and kind of fitting that million bucks to the best use of it. That's why we've asked for planning money, you know, last year and the year before, so we can get out ahead of this a little bit better than just that type of model. But, I mean, you're exactly right. We're seeing shortages in roofing materials, insulation, resin for pipe, fiberglass. The only thing that really hasn't been affected is stone, concrete, materials, and asphalt. I mean, everything else is, you know, it used to be two garage doors and now building materials, lumber is starting to come back down some, but, I mean, otherwise, it's like anything that had a month lead time is now three to four month lead time and.
Nate, how much, how much have we had built into the budget for these capital improvements aside from the tasks that you've been dogged with, with the ARPA stormwater?
Capital projects, you mean?
Yeah, so I mean, for stormwater for?
We probably had, I'd have to go back, I'm shooting off the hip here, but I'm thinking we had between, you know, the mansion park improvements and some sidewalk project improvement-type capital expenditures, probably seven fifty range is what we had on the books in the prior spending plan or the prior capital improvement plan. And probably three hundred, four hundred-ish in liquid fuels projects that we were going to put out.
And we're still looking to stretch these dollars and do as much as possible because there are still the existing grants. There still is, you know, things we could do, working with like Penn Dot District Nine, like Nate and the mayor and I were at the MPO meeting earlier today and there's other grants. Another issue is we want to make sure we partnership in some of these areas with our neighbors in Logan Township because some of these projects are very close to the city township boundary lines and so we want to make sure that everything goes well there and, and so we'll be working with them too.
And some of these challenges with the stormwater situation are multi-issues because they start from a Penn Dot issue, run into the township, and then ultimately run down through the city, which has caused, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the compounding effect that unfortunately our residents have faced.
A good example of that would be Eighteenth Street. We want to make sure we work well with the Water Authority, with Logan Township, with Penn Dot, and get together and collaborate properly to do the best we can to solve the issues there.
So, I mean, I guess a question I have for my peers here would be, you know, are we comfortable kind of doing like a soft dollar commitment offhand to earmark for stormwater? Or, I mean, it's something that, I mean, no pun intended, that could continue to be a fluid situation that we could perhaps monitor over time for certain projects when we get those plans back from the engineering. But what I don't want to have happen is we continue to, I want to get some of this money out onto the street as opposed to us, you know, kicking this can.
Agree.
So are you saying that, you know, assigning a dollar amount?
Yeah, kind of a soft earmark off of it, yeah. So if we're, if we have thirty-nine point eight million is at the amount, I mean, you know?
Well, we received about nineteen million-ish upfront and then we're going to receive another payment. I was actually thinking in the realm of things, I think we could probably pretty decently apportion about seven million to stormwater and still as a start for some of these things we need to do.
So.
And take care of some serious problems for these poor folks that have been going through what they've been going through.
Well, you know, we also have the, the other nineteen million won't come until
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
March, May?
Yep.
And so, you're right, we could use the nineteen million that we have now to get some of these other projects underway that, that we're eyeing up or uses for that money that we've identified.
So what I had thought maybe we could do here is talk about process without getting into too much specificity. I mean, as Nate mentioned, you know, he has a list of projects and he's assigned some priorities to those and we've talked about them multiple times, but some of the, some of that may be changeable in terms of some of the studies that we're having done that, you know, we'd like to fix all the problems, but as he said, we could throw three million dollars at something and change the, virtually very little change to the actual water.
Yeah.
So I think we need to look at that, you know, going forward. We have some things to, some money, you know, some projects to get into, money to put on the street and get the ball rolling. But I thought maybe we could talk a little bit about just general categories where we would like some of this money to go. Obviously, I gave a real high, high-level overview of what the requests were, but I think Councilman Kelly, you hit the nail on the head when you, when you said that whatever we spend is probably going to accelerate in cost over time. I know I sit on the Water Authority Board and, you know, their recent costs related to the Bellwood Dam and the Bellwood Treatment Facility, you know, came in well over budget and it's all related to the effect of COVID and what we're dealing with in those terms. So we can expect, maybe, maybe when we do get into specificity is to put some sort of a, you know, escalator into what we would otherwise think that project would cost. So we would say, okay, well, that project would be, you know, two million dollars, you know, we could probably consider, you know, some factor multiplier of that as what we're actually going to end up paying. But what I thought also was that, and again, against, in terms of what Councilman Kelly had talked about, the city has some certain needs for projects that, you know, we have in relation to upgrading facilities in the city and upgrading, maybe expanding some of the buildings that we have in term, and upgrading them. So I have some specific recommendations, I guess you would call them, related to an upgrade of the highway garage facility. We have a Margaret Avenue facility that could actually, we could, you know, sink some money into to help, to aid for training of employees and really investing in our workforce. And then also an expansion of the police building. The police building's been in place for about twenty years, I think, twenty years or more since they moved in there. It's in need of renovation and expansion. There's a place, you know, the, right next door, right beside it, that we could, you know, expand the building. That's something to think about. You know, it's not cheap, of course, but, you know, I think it would be valuable in the long run. Some other areas that I've identified here are, you know, I think our component unit Parking Authority lost some revenue. I think we should probably step up and provide that to them. I mean, they're operating on a, on a very low budget to begin with, with very limited staff. The Greater Altoona Economic Development Corporation has requested a donation, I think. That's a, that's a small amount of money. I think we probably could grant that. Other idea, I mentioned that Altoona Blair County Development Corporation had put together significant requests for funding for various programs they have. I think we could, we could put some money into a loan, revolving loan fund to fund business activity.
I thought it wasn't so much programs they had, they gave us a list of suggestions on all the money.
Yes.
And I think there were seventeen cents left. I asked if we could keep that for us, but, but it was, I wouldn't say it was all their programs. I mean, I think it was things that we could, and a lot of it was, you know, good ideas, but.
Yeah, I know that they mentioned the revolving loan fund and probably some allocation to the, was it the land bank?
Yeah.
I think, just given the timeliness of the situation, here we are, it's the end of September, we're starting, we're in the budget process, we haven't had any public discussions about it yet. So I guess, you know, first and foremost, I would think if there are things that would need to be incorporated into the 2022 operating budget for the city, that those are the things that we should deal with first from a priority standpoint. And then, you know, maybe back to Councilman Ickes's point, you know, Jesse, the idea of saying, if we look at that and we can come to agreement on that, then there's X number of dollars left and do we want to spend twenty percent of that, twenty-five percent of that on stormwater and flood projects and allocating it that way? And then I think it's a matter of trying to develop, you know, if that's the way we want to go, what are the priorities as to, you know, what's, what's number one, number two, number three? You know, because we, based on cost, you might not get through that list very far.
Could we possibly get like an idea that, like, the projects that you mentioned, like, something like this at the next work session, like, kind of a breakdown of every project that you had mentioned and a rundown of how much that, you know, you think that each of those projects might, might cost? I mean, and something similar, like, from Nate, like, the idea, you said that some projects are like ready to go right now with funding. I mean, could we get a spreadsheet at the next work session with those? And then anything from any other department that you can think of that, that we might be able to use these funds to get people, you know, to get the community, you know, moving as, you know, without hastiness, but, you know?
Yeah, I can, I could give you some more specificity in terms of the projects, projected costs, certainly Nate, we're, you know, it's kind of an, as I mentioned, an ongoing issue with the stormwater for specific areas, but then I think council probably ought to think about where else you want to use the money. Because we know stormwater is a, you know, a big issue and we've heard, heard quite a bit about that at the two public meetings that we've had. And I think everybody fully intends to, you know, that we're going to devote a lot of, you know, money and resources towards that. It's really a matter of what else do you want to do with the funds? Because we could probably spend the money completely on stormwater if we really, you know, really wanted to or thought we should.
To Councilman Kelly's point, I mean, there's a lot of great suggestions in here and a lot of them that, I mean, to, I think you said there's not a single bad suggestion that, you know, that was presented. So, I mean, I think you can break them down into category and one of the categories that we haven't really mentioned is recreation, although are there, are there specific, you know, limitations to spending the money toward any kind of recreation?
No, there's, there's very little limit on what you, other than, again, the general idea is that you're, you're devoting the money towards addressing, you know, some aspect of the results of the pandemic. So that's a very broad-based issue. Recreation is clearly something that we can, you know, apply these funds to. Really, there's just restrictions on what you can, you know, basically you can't, you can't pay it towards debt service, you can't pay it towards your, you know, your pension funds or debt, debt related to your pensions. And you can't just use it for general purposes like, you know, paying your workforce just in general.
And I believe the projects you mentioned that were city-specific, like the police are definitely in need, at the very least, an upgrade of the existing building or we may have to think outside the box there and, and that's something that definitely needs addressed. And then the other issue we deal with is, okay, what makes sense to spend the ARPA money for? Or is, would there be like a better way of finding an alternative funding source or some kind of match to stretch those dollars as much as possible?
Well, let me, let me ask another question because we've mentioned recreation. Do we, Jesse, where is the rec commission with Prospect Pool?
We are no further with Prospect Pool than we were this time last year. Other than the fact that this past, the summer in 2020, it was, there was some work done on it to try to seal up cracks in the liner.
Based on what I've seen?
It's still hemorrhaging water.
Yeah, so.
To an unknown location for an unknown reason.
Okay.
And that's lines going to the pool, like, that's not, that's not just like the pool itself, that's some of the utility lines.
Presum, yeah, presumably.
I love the pools dropping, it said a foot a day.
Yeah.
So it's got to be, it's got to be coming out of the pit somewhere.
I think courtesy of reporter Kibler's mathematical calculations, about sixty-nine thousand gallons of water a day. So are we, would we be able, I'm just asking, are we able to use funds to upgrade the pool? Is that, so I get confused on this and full public disclosure, what counts as an eligible COVID-19 expense and what doesn't? So I guess my question is, could fixing the pool count as a COVID expense?
It's a recreation-related expense. It gets people out from inside.
Which is where they want you to be.
Yeah, so I, I think it is. And if you look at what some of the other municipalities are doing around the country, you know, they're really stretching, you know, stretching the boundaries of what you might think of what can be done with, with this money.
And that's going to be another situation and I think Nate did some back-of-the-envelope calculations this time last year on the pool and we were around one and a half and I'm sure it would be north of that at this point.
Nate's frantically looking for his envelope.
But I, I think, I think we need to plug the rec commission in, you know, as to, you know, what's their wish list? What would they do? What are their priorities? You know, and is the pool their top priority and what kind of dollars are we talking about? Because that's, that's our recreation arm is that, is that rec commission with the school district in Logan Township. But I think we need some numbers from them that, before we can, you know, oh yeah, here's, for us to say, here's some money, and then we come back and the rec commission says, well, the pool's going to cost twice as much as that. We, you know, you didn't give us enough money. Well, then, you know, that's kind of silly. So I think, I think the rec commission has to give us some numbers. But so. But certainly, I mean, I think we all heard loud and clear that, you know, having a community pool seemed to be very important to the community. So.
I would agree with that.
But, but, you know, is, is the current pool in its current condition, you know, how much longer can we keep propping that up? Do we need to look at, you know, a major rehab, do we need to look at building a new pool there, or?
Well, and actually, if we could plug the rec commission in, there's a lot of great suggestions on this spreadsheet. And I think just from speaking to people about how the money should be spent in terms of recreation. But we don't have, aside from a little bit of the, of the numbers that we discussed last year in Prospect, we don't have numbers on any of the recreational suggestions. So, I mean, even to just hand the rec commission some of the suggestions that have been made to say, you know, what do you think? You know, could, is that feasible, like, you know, to say, like, can we take these and run with them? Do we need a new park or a new pool or a new this, that, or the other thing, and what do they think it would cost?
And another thing we need to really be cognizant of is, once again, referring to Bill Kibler's handiwork there. We look and seeing how much the city pays for rec commission funding as opposed to the other entities involved. We want to make sure we work well with the school district, with the township. Because we don't, we don't want to just have assumptions out there that we're just going to keep vastly funding things. We want to make sure the other partners step up to the plate and do their part, too.
So I think we can get some direction from the, from the CBRC board. And certainly the CBRC staff, I think, would be heavily involved in that. But in, in terms of Councilman Carver, in terms of what you had, I believe, requested for the next work session, I can provide some more specificity in terms of the estimated or, yeah, I guess, estimated costs related to the projects we're talking about for the city and outside of the city and for stormwater. So we can come back with more specificity in relation to those projects.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I know that the rec commission had this study done that looked at funding. You know, but is the rec commission looking, you know, at a long-term plan, five-year, ten-year plan? As to, it would be, it would be, it would be great if we could do these, provide these services and that sort of thing. And looking at their facilities from a maintenance standpoint, too. So, I mean, I think it would be.
Well, I think, I think the structure that we have from the rec side now, it's, it's not that it's bad, but it's definitely outdated. So, I mean, the facilities we have as far as the different locations, I mean, in an ideal world, I don't think that we would have different areas for basketball to be played, et cetera. I think it would be kind of at a, at a campus location in a modern world. But, I mean, the report was pretty clear that with other comps in the Commonwealth, we're pretty low from a per capita funding standpoint with the CBRC.
Yeah.
There's a lot of moving parts.
Well, yeah.
A lot to think about, and we got to really pay attention to land. What we can't afford when we're building detention basins and ponds and things of that nature, and addressing recreation needs, we cannot afford to lose tax base. We have to keep the tax base, and so we need to do things to benefit the current and future property owners so that we can do what we need to do and expand the tax base. Because that helps all the taxpayers.
And in addition to that, and I'll piggyback off that, the challenge that our community is coming into, or maybe has been here, and I notice it more as, you know, with a young family, is we have a shortage of supply of middle-class homes in Altoona.
So do we, do we know what the disposition is of the Keith Athletic Field? I mean, at one time, there was a proposal that the school district, and this goes back to when Dr. Murray was superintendent, there was a proposal, they looked at some housing, that got shot down, didn't get, you know, never went any further. The individual was, was interested in that, unfortunately passed away, it kind of went away. Haven't heard anything more about it, but, but now I'm hearing there's this long-term lease, and I mean, long-term, like, a hundred years regarding the Keith Athletic Field for soccer fields. And, you know, to find ten acres of ground in the city that you could build single-family homes on, that's a really rare opportunity. And, I mean, so do we know if that disposition is final, or?
My understanding is that it's, it's done.
That's mine as well.
With a deed restriction.
With a deed restriction.
I'm hoping that's not the case.
Meaning, meaning, do you know what that might be, or?
That it has to be used for a recreational facility. That's my understanding, but.
Yeah, my question is, can the taxpayers of Altoona afford to be subsidizing all of central Pennsylvania's recreation? And the answer to that is an obvious no. We, we do more than our fair share as it is, and we just can't keep giving up our tax base so that everybody can come here and, and play.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a real need for housing, not just, it's not just in the city, I mean, it's county-wide. The county's identified that, you know, the county commissioners will tell you that. And, and we lose people who, who move up to Center County because they have more desirable housing stock than we do in Blair County.
And I think the median property value in the county is one, I don't know, one thirties? I mean, and the median property value in the city is maybe in the low eighties? I mean, we are substantially under that of comparable for the rest of the county. And there is, it's just a very short, short supply. I mean, ideally, I would, I, you know, I don't, I don't have the idea, but I would like to, like for us to use some of, some of these funny, these monies to bolster new homes in the city of Altoona.
Yeah, and I think if we're able to allocate some money to the, the land bank, that's something that we might be able to get done, you know, utilizing the land bank to acquire properties, to combine, you know, properties to make one parcel where it makes sense, and using that money then to hire contractors to build single-family homes that, that we can then sell and, and, you know, use those proceeds then to, to reinvest back into the land, the land bank so that we can, you know, whenever the, the ARPA money runs out, maybe we have a nice little nest egg that we've saved up, you know, from, from those proceeds that can sustain itself.
That would be the redevelopment authority, I believe, correct?
Yeah.
Correct. And I agree, I mean, this is, this is an opportunity for the land bank to really have a, a chance to shine on this.
Well, and not, it's not, and, and not just single-family homes, because that's really going to take some ground. But, I mean, if you look at the project the Durbans want to do with the townhouses, and if you look at the individual cost of each of those, what those townhouses might be, that's a pretty substantial investment, and, and that might be the type of thing, rather than just, you know, focusing on single-family to be able to do something like that.
Some townhomes in the area.
You know, you go in other parts of the state, you have row homes. In Altoona, you have two-and-a-half-story wood-framed houses that are three feet apart.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Kind of, kind of.
It's, it's, it's not much, and there's not much difference between that and a townhome, except that it's an individual home, but I mean, it's, it.
Similar to the presentation that Steve McKnight made a few months ago of, over in Pittsburgh, the townhomes down the way of Pittsburgh. I mean, I think that that's, I think that's definitely more attractable for, for the modern era today. None of these decisions are easy, and given the light of the world that we've been in for the last, I don't know, feels like twenty-seven years, but.
But this is a good problem to have, though, you know? You have forty million dollars that we get to, you know, try to do positive things for the city with.
I think the challenge right this second, one of the challenges right this second, is a lot of these are just, we have an idea of how much this, this might cost, something might cost, but we don't have any hard and fast budgets yet. With the exception of, of a few things up here. But I think that all of the ideas that have been thrown out tonight are great ideas, and I think all of the ideas that have been presented to us over the course of the last few months since the, the ARPA was conceptualized.
Do we have any thoughts on what we want to do with the advisory board or the recommended advisory board?
I think, well, I think in the end, once we have sort of a list of projects that we're okay with, then we can present it to them and help them, have them help us narrow it down, you know?
Well, they could, they could certainly help prioritize. I think, I think what we need to do, to me, first and foremost, the things we need to look at, if there are structural things for the city that would affect the budget, I think we need to act on those.
Agreed.
Soon, because we're in, we're in the budget process. So Omar, I mean, I, I think we have to task you with that, and, and, you know, what does that look like? How much that is that? Because that's going to be part of that budgeting process. Then subtract that from the thirty-nine million, then I think we, as a governing body, have to say, all right, there's thirty-five million dollars left, and we're going to look at, you know, four million dollars for recreation, so much, and, 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 you know, just for anyone listening and for our friends in the media, these are just, you know, I'm just talking here, this is.
Non-committal.
Yeah, you know, how much, how much money for recreation, how much money for storm, how much money for the land bank? And then, I think that becomes our task, is to divide that up, and then we can look to the advisory panel to say, here's a list of suggestions that we've generated, can you help prioritize this? And they can come back, and then we can move forward with that. So, you know, can we, can we look to at least allocate, you know, by subject, maybe by the end of the year? Is that a reasonable expectation?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I believe it's wise to do that by the end of the year.
So, and again, there's, there's some really good ideas that came out that I think, you know, may not end up being part of the discussion for funding, but I think we need to look to try to address them. You know, so, because there, you know, like I said, there are a lot of important issues that were raised. And so I think it was good discussion, and I really appreciate the staff's work on the two public meetings, so.
And that's another key, there's been a lot of work going into all of this. It's not like we're just here discussing this, and I, I know Nate's done a ton of work, Omar, you've been doing a ton of work here. Pretty much every department has been putting time toward this effort, and so, yeah, thanks, definitely.
So, just following up, I, I will come back at the next meeting, the next work session, which, by the way, will be the last work session of the year, to, with more specific projects and costs related to that. And as far as, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, tell me what your thoughts are, but if we have some stormwater issues that we know we can address immediately and that need to be addressed, we should probably just move on those so that we, given that, given that we need to spend this money in a short period of time. Do I, is that an agree?
That's sort of why I, I came up with it, because when I was looking at it between our, our meetings and our mini-meetings, if you want to call them that, where I came up with the seven million was, we know we're definitely going to at least appoint seven million dollars to stormwater, probably, perhaps a lot more, maybe not a lot more, we don't know yet till money comes, till the, you know, engineering and design plans come back. But that's where I came up with that number, because that still allows the full allocation for the city projects that you spoke of, along with, we know, with Nate's work. Because we got to give those guys a little bit of flexibility here, too, and give them a decision, and allow them to move forward on some of this, because there's only so many backos out there and so many contractors. And like Councilman Kelly was saying, if we all wait till the last minute, then, then the bids are going to go sky-high, even worse than they are now.
Okay, so I'll include that in, some specificity related to those projects at our next work session.
Thank you.
Thanks, Omar.
All right, moving on to student housing.
Yes, we've had several landlords request to utilize their approved student homes for residential rental housing. The request stems from most likely the enrollment decline at Penn State Altoona, quite possibly the, an effect of the pandemic. Until the numbers rebound, landlords would like to rent their homes as standard rentals without jeopardizing their student home license status. They would continue to be subject to the city of Altoona's rental unit inspection program with our inspections due and conducted once every three years. Currently, in accordance with our zoning code, chapter eight hundred dash twenty-two, student homes are granted as a special exception by the zoning hearing board. And if the property ceases to be used as a student home for a period of twelve months, it reverts back to its original use, so the special exception is, it's null and void. What would happen is, if they would rent the property to just a residential, regular residential home, they would have to reapply to the zoning hearing board and establish grounds to have it approved as another special exception. So landlords are seeking the exemption or some kind of, some kind of exemption from the city that failure to use the property for the period of twelve months doesn't cause it to become a non-conforming use. And I've discussed this with Tom, and originally we had thought that we could do a, maybe provide some kind of resolution, but.
Yeah, we, we, you know, I'd look to see if we could do it by resolution, but looking at it and the way the code reads, if you're going to do it, you're basically going to have to do an amendment to the.
Do an ordinance.
Do the amendment to the ordinance, yeah.
So I had a conversation today with a landlord, and, you know, this is, like you mentioned, this is because of the current conditions, you know, with Penn State and enrollment there. And, you know, there's a lot of unknowns, like, you know, the market, who knows when the market, that market will rebound. And we would have to maybe entertain this again twelve months from now. Would it be possible to amend our ordinance to make it so that, that landlords could use their student homes for regular market rate rentals as well? Because I think, I believe Logan Township's student housing ordinance is already set up that way. So if, if you have a student home in Logan Township, you can already rent it back and forth at will. So I didn't know, you know, if this is something where we may revisit it again in a year, would it make sense just to amend our ordinance to?
Section eight is such a way, you can have a registered, section eight registered rental, but doesn't mean you have to.
Microphone.
Doesn't mean, doesn't mean you have to, to rent it directly to them. If there's nobody on the voucher, you can rent it to just anybody.
The only thing we may want to keep in mind are the distance regulations that are outlined in the ordinance. Right now, there's, there's distances that are established that one student home can, you know, obviously has to be so far apart from another. So I think that's another worry, that if they would lose their student home status, or even if they're renting to a residential, a regular residential rental family, that another student home could actually just take their position.
No, I'd like to prevent that.
Right, okay.
I, I think it's an actual win-win. I remember back in the summer of, it was either twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve, when we were putting together the comprehensive plan, we had meetings all over the city, trying to get the wheels spinning faster. Okay, Juniata Civics, we had a meeting, and, and a lot of the subject there was student housing. The gist of it is, they love Penn State, they just don't want the students living right next door, is what it came down to. So if we could do anything to protect, I see that as a win-win. If, if it's considered a student house, but for the time being, whatever amount of time that is, they're renting to regular rental family, rental whatever, keeping that student house status, still keeping the distance rules in place, that sounds like something the residents would, would be for.
I, you know, as far as any amendment to the ordinance, again, you know, we can make it as narrow as we want, if we want to make it broader. You know, I guess it all depends, if you want to amend the ordinance so that from this point forward, it's going to be kind of like what you just said, like, okay, it can be your student or residential, whether one or the other, there's, you know, basically on this timeline of this twelve months anymore, I mean, you can do that. Or if you want it more narrow, where it's just, you know, we have a unique set of circumstances. Or if you want it more narrow where it's just, you know, we have a unique set of circumstances right now and it's just for a limited window, you can do that too. I mean, that's up to you folks.
But if we, if, you know, you hear, you hear some really crazy predictions about how long we might be dealing with COVID.
Yeah.
You know, so Rebecca, walk me through, I mean, I know the process of getting something designated as student housing as a rental. How does that, is there a different fee that they pay? Or is it just the process of being designated that is different? Because they still will be subject to rental inspections that we do with other rental...
Right, and they are, even right now, they had, they're subject to our, you know, they still have to register it as a residential rental unit. There's no additional fee actually to maintain a student home license. It's just that initial approval that they have to receive via special exception. That's a four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee established, you know, that's been established. And that is because they have to show that it's a conforming use, basically. Again, I mean, right now, the way the zoning code, they designate it as a nonconforming use of land is how they designate it. So they have to get a special exception to be able to utilize it as a student home, a rental property. If they ceased, if they ceased to use it as, as a student home after a period of twelve months, it just reverts back to its original status. And that would just be a regular residential home. And that's pretty much the only way that we found that they monitor the student homes is through the nonconforming use.
So, yeah, so right now, if that twelve months came and went, then they'd have to go back and initiate the process again, okay, so...
Absolutely, and I believe right now we're looking at, I mean, the reports that I'm hearing are at least two dozen homes that are vacant. They're not being utilized as student homes. And it's creating a problem and it's a hardship for these landlords.
Okay, and we all know that vacant houses on a street, you know, invite problems. I see everybody on staff shaking their head, so yeah, so we need to... I guess, Councilor, I would say that this is almost akin to keeping a liquor license in safekeeping.
Okay.
You know, where you want to maintain the license and not give it up, you know, so they put that in safekeeping with the LCB and hang on to it. So, I mean, is that a fair analogy?
That's a fair analogy. And I think I'm getting a general idea of what council's looking for and I can certainly, you know, come up with a draft of, you know, an amendment to the ordinance and we can look at it and obviously, you know, tweak it as council sees fit.
Let's take a morph of ours and see what Logan Township, like the mayor was saying, if that's how Logan Township does it and it solves the problem long-term.
Well, their ordinance as a whole is a little bit of a different animal than ours, because they got theirs from, I think, Bloomberg, Bloomsburg University is who they copied there from. And our, some things in ours don't exactly line up the same as theirs. But I think for the most part, given some flexibility, is something that we should definitely consider, because it's no fault of the landlords that they're, they're suffering through this.
How's that saying go? Blessed are the flexible, for they shall not break. I'm a fan of flexibility.
All right.
I'm done. Not yet.
Business, business privilege tax.
I missed that somewhere in the beatitude.
Yeah.
Next day.
Yeah, that was the Rick James version.
Okay.
This was, you know, put on the agenda. I know earlier this month, there was an inquiry regarding the application to the business privilege tax and how it pertains to a business that might have, you know, multiple locations, some within the city, some outside the city. And, you know, I reviewed the apple portions of the code, also spoke, you know, with Mr., the gentleman from Berchheimer who handles all of the, Jim Hunt. He's Director of Governmental Relations for Berchheimer who collects these taxes for, on behalf of the city. And basically, you know, if there's a nexus between, like, if you have a location here in Altoona and that location, you know, generates sales, generates orders, you know, collects, you know, the orders, things of that nature, then it would be subject to the business privilege tax. And, you know, if you have another location outside the city and that location, whatever sales they're generating or orders they're filling and the fees they're collecting would not be subject to it. I think there was some question as to if there was a company that had like multiple locations, would every tax, like every bit of business from all locations be subject to this tax? And the general answer would be, would be no, okay? There has to be, there's got to be a nexus between, you know, the gross volume of business you're looking to tax and its relationship to the city of Altoona. So that was kind of a very general overview. And I know some on council expressed an interest in discussing this, so that's the, you know, reason it was on the agenda. So I know, I would say if this is something that the council really wants to look into as far as, you know, any type of amendments to that business privilege tax, one of the things I would recommend is probably, I mean, like a probably detailed discussion with Mr. Hunt from Berchheimer. He could probably maybe outline if there's specific questions as to the application of the tax in specific situations.
Do you know if it's possible to amend the language of our ordinance to plainly state that? Because I think the issue is the wording or how the ordinance between business privilege and mercantile is worded.
The language in this is, and this is why I asked for it to be on the work session, because, and I asked the city clerk to pull the business privilege tax, which is provided in your information here, but where it defines what gross receipts are, I mean, I guess if I were king for a day, it would read cash credits and/or property of any kind or nature received by any business offering services from places, offices or establishments within the city of Altoona, period. Because the way that this reads to me, and I think the way it's being read by headhunters that are looking to move locations and some of which Altoona has been on those lists, but I think we get a minus mark next to us is the, this appears as if we are taxing everything and all things, no matter where it comes from, which is a problem.
Well, because we know it doesn't work that way, otherwise, right? Sheets is headquartered here, they'd be paying gross receipts on six hundred stores, but that's not the case.
Correct.
You know, so is there a way to reflect the language in the ordinance?
I think what you're, what you're seeing here is, you know, where these types of taxes sprang from the statutory authority, basically if any municipality is going to implement them, they had like a strict deadline as to, like, if you didn't implement them by such and such date, you couldn't implement them. And I think that's why you see such broad-based language in many of these statutes. And what's happened over the years is they've kind of been tailored and tailored down by court decisions. And that's where basically you get the nexus decision, you know, the nexus aspect at this point. I can certainly look into that. My, you know, my concern is because those, those taxes, like the statutory authority provided deadlines to when you could implement these taxes. I still, I don't want to run afoul where like if you, or you're amending it, does that affect the validity of...
And that would still apply even though we're a home rule charter?
Yes.
What are we doing here?
Yeah. You can't do anything, you can't do anything that's, if there's a specific statutory prohibition against something.
I think it was nineteen eighty-nine, correct?
I believe so, yes.
So you will expect a thumbs up or a thumbs down as to whether we can fix this language?
Yes.
So just from my understanding, that is really the reason why it's on the agenda. It's more about not the rate or how it's applied, but just the language in there that needs to be clarified, cleaned up, for lack of a better term.
If it's possible.
Yeah.
Like, we, you know, we realize that the state is the one that created, you know, the legislation, you know, in the first place. So it may be, it may be a legislative issue, you know, that the legislature would have to address if we wanted to amend it, I don't know, but...
And if this were to be a, and if, that's a good point, if this were to be a tax that say, we opted as a governing body, and I'm not introducing this, that we opted to eliminate it, would this be a tax that could be picked up by one of the other taxing authorities that we are, that we share a geographic area with? That's conterminous with the city of Altoona, because you're a vocab builder.
My, my read on it is yes.
So we wouldn't accomplish anything. If we were to eliminate it, we wouldn't accomplish anything essentially.
I think we had this discussion about eight years ago and came to that conclusion that if we got rid of it, the other entity would just take it all.
It would actually have to look at how their governing ordinance or resolution, however that works, reads. So generally speaking, you levy these taxes with a large reach and you can see in the current ordinance we have, it's levied with a large reach with the realization that that's going to be restricted.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate the input. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on that? Uh, we have ten minutes, so we'll move on to city manager updates.
We just have a couple of items here that won't take probably but a few minutes. So what, what we've started doing since I've been the manager is to have periodic meetings of our senior leadership team. We have a meeting of that type coming up this week. We're going to talk about some, some big issues and some small issues. I think it's a vital part of what we do, that we have to get together and interact and understand what's going on around the city and in other departments. So just want to let you know that that's, you know, we're going to have one of those on Thursday. City budget will be sent to council on or about the twelfth of October and that's in accordance with the budget calendar that we circulated before. The first meeting, I believe, to review the budget was on, is Monday, the eighteenth of October. So that's something to keep, keep in mind. And we will also have, and it'll be one of the subjects of our, of our senior leadership team meeting, is a capital improvement program. An update to that, it didn't occur last year, it should have, but it didn't. It will occur this year and it's my intent to update it every year. But it would be for the period twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-six and we will present that to council probably for discussion or approval November meeting. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I'll move on to council discussion, Councilman Kelly.
Omar, with regard to the budget process, some of which you delineated there, how will contract negotiations, because that's very ongoing and fluid right now, and how are you factoring that into budget preparation?
That's a, that's a process that's in the works right now. I don't have a final answer to that. When we have a final budget, I'll be able to explain exactly how we've accounted for some of the items that we're likely to address in a final, final contracts with the unions.
Because, I mean, as long as I've been here, we've never had to go into the new year and reopen the budget, so...
So we'll estimate a cost and place that somewhere in the budget most likely.
Okay. That's, that's really all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilman Harper?
I have nothing to add, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Butterball?
I was thinking there with the ARPA funding over the last few weeks, because there are so many entities involved in some of these projects that there may be a need for, not necessarily political level, for lack of a better way to put it, but staff-level meetings between, you know, city, township, school district, water authority, and maybe even Norfolk Southern, because they own quite a swath of land beyond the tracks in places in the township and city where it may behoove us to consider a project area of some type to alleviate stormwater or something of that nature, just something to keep in mind there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Nickus?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing else this evening, thank you.
Councilman Cachetti?
Yes, sir. Thanks.
Councilwoman Jordan? Okay. We, at seven-thirty, we are going to be welcoming members of Altoona, Iowa City Council to our meeting for a little friendly wager with them on the upcoming Penn State and Iowa football game in two weeks. So we have about five minutes until they join us, so, Bill, do you want to do five minutes of? Can you be done in five minutes, you think?
Can you, can you be done in two?
Can we place a friendly wager?
Yeah. According to Vegas, the over and under on Bill Kibler is two minutes and forty-five seconds. So go, Bill.
No way, no way.
I'm taking the over too.
Omar, the, is the true savings of, for the refinancing of the debt that you have now, is that three, three-hundred-seventy-nine thousand?
Yes.
After expenses are accounted for?
Yeah, no, that's not the final number, that's just the most recent update, so, yeah. As of, as of the best we know, as of today, yes.
And most of that would be in the first year?
Yes.
Okay. And I read that correct and heard Bruce Kelly say that ABCD Corp. actually asked for forty thousand, forty million dollars worth of stuff?
Well, they, yeah, they, they had put that number out there. Some of it, I think, related to some city-related projects that they thought was, were a good idea. But yeah, yes, they absolutely did.
I think it was a composition of ideas from the business community that was presented to ABCD and recommended to us through ABCD from the business community.
Right, okay. Um... Jesse, you mentioned something to Nate about the, I think, but I didn't hear it right. The pool costs were estimated last year to be potentially one-point-five million to do what needs to be done.
I believe the last conversation we had, and this was at the time of the former manager, that his, his comment had indicated some back at the end of the math, math at one and a half million. Now, I'm not holding, I mean, I'm not holding you to that, Nate, but I, that's from memory, so...
It was, it was like that and all we did was kind of looked at the cost of some, like, pool projects that were, you know, on the, on the internet that we found. So they weren't anything more than that.
So it wasn't like that would necessarily fix the leaking problem or something like that?
No.
Okay.
And it may be less too, that's like new construction. I mean, that's what we found like ten minutes before the meeting, so...
Right, okay. I can't read this. Oh, Matt, when you were talking about the, the land bank in terms of the ARP money, I got the impression that you envisioned the land bank actually hiring a contractor and eventually owning, the city would own the properties? Is that, did I hear you right or am I...
Well, it wouldn't really own them, I mean, we would hire, you know, a developer, builder to build homes and then sell them. That was, you know, kind of, kind of the vision of that.
So that the, the city would be the, not just the facilitator for a developer?
I guess we'd be the developers too, yeah.
Oh, okay. Is that a new concept that hadn't been discussed before, because I didn't...
Well, I think it's maybe been discussed, but I don't think we've had the money, the money to do it.
Yeah.
So the land bank has existed for a number of years, but it's never had any money. And here's a chance for us to use some resources to try to eat a shrinking, to try to improve the shrinking tax base problem that we've been facing for the last, I don't know, eighty years.
And once, if that were to be the case, if that, those buildings or those houses were to be sold, would that money go back into the land bank for like a future project?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
You got twenty-nine, you got twenty-nine seconds.
Okay.
Why don't we come back to the ability?
That's something that could not possibly be done without a big infusion of money like, like this, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I guess I'll save my remaining questions for later. Okay. I, I guess I'll save my remaining questions for later.
Yeah, absolutely. Put that baby on.
Hello, can you hear us?
Keep the volume up, a little louder. Oh, that's.
There we go, that's better.
There we go. Alright, I'll get my face up in the mic. How's that?
Outstanding.
Welcome.
Thank you. Wel, welcome, welcome as well.
Welcome to Altoona.
Yeah, welcome to Altoona. Yeah, um, so, I, my name's Mayor Matt Pacifico and I'm going to, um, welcome, first of all, and turn it over to Councilman Bruce Kelly.
Well, um, greetings to our newfound friends in Altoona, Iowa. And, um, we've had some conversations with staff members from the city of Altoona and, uh, as we expected, the people of Iowa are great folks. And, um, um, we think people of Pennsylvania here, particularly in central Pennsylvania, we have a lot of common characteristics, uh, with, with the people of Iowa. Uh, we're, you know, good folks, hardworking. We also have two great institutions in the Pennsylvania State University and the University of Iowa. I've been to Kinnick Stadium. Uh, it's a great place for a game. The Iowa fans are, are just amazing. And, uh, you know, Kirk Ferentz is a Pennsylvania product, played his high school football at Upper St. Clair. And, uh, you have a great coach there. We have a great coach in James Franklin. But we love our Nittany Lion just as much as you folks love Herky the Hawk, uh, in Iowa. And, uh, speaking from our city council, we have four graduates of, of Penn State who sit on our city council. We have several department heads, our city clerk, our fire chief, our police chief, we're all Penn State grads. And, you know, we have a pretty important game coming up here.
City manager.
Oh, and the city manager, I'm sorry, Omar.
He is.
I'll get a memo on that. But, um, we have a pretty important game coming up. Now, we don't want to look past Indiana and I'm sure that Iowa doesn't want to look past Maryland this coming Friday. Uh, but we thought that this would be a great opportunity to reach out to our, uh, our namesake in Iowa and, uh, issue a little bit of a wager on this upcoming football game. So, that's what brings us to tonight.
Well, I'm, uh, Mayor Dean O'Connor, city of Altoona, Iowa. And, uh, our council members, we really think this is a fantastic idea. We're really glad that you reached out to us. We again have Iowa State and Iowa. Most of our, I think, our staff are Iowa State fans, but I'm willing to hop on the Hawk with Pan Wagon just to meet you guys.
Well, the Cyclones have a pretty good football program too. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, so, I think this is a great idea. I can see us continuing this each year and they play it against each other. Uh, it sounds like we've lined up a pretty good, um, prize if you win. We have a local steakhouse that voted the best steakhouse in Iowa numerous times. It's kind of a local favorite called The Big Sphere. And the owner has graciously volunteered to donate, uh, steaks to all seven of you.
We need off our, we need off ours.
We are.
We have been embarrassed.
No, no, we are, we are putting up and we will match with the comparable wager. We, uh, we, uh, one of our, uh, uh, things here in Altoona, Pennsylvania, uh, is Boyer Candy and we are known for their mallow cups. And we will, uh, we are putting up a comparable amount of mallow cups for those steaks. We, we, we feel comfortable that we'll be getting the steaks. Just saying. So, uh, but we might send you some mallow cups even after Penn State beats Iowa. So, um, but yeah, we just, um, I'll even go a step further. If Iowa wins, I'll wear an Iowa shirt to the council meeting after that. I'll put myself on the line for that, so.
I'm happy to put on, the fact I'm wearing Penn State colors denied by accident.
Well.
Yes, I'm looking forward to the game and, uh, kind of sorted out on, our communications director's kind of worked out some ideas for us to get this out on social media with all of you. And, uh, we have our page as well. So, I think you have the individual pages, but we'll, we'll sort that out. We'll start, we'll start some, uh, friendly banter.
Absolutely. And I, 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 I think as you had alluded to, this could certainly, uh, be something we look to annually. You know, it's, Iowa's a great state. You have, uh, great schools there and the University of Iowa's, uh, got a heck of a football team and, uh,
Councilman, maybe we need to, maybe we need to all stand up so they can see how we're all dressed back here.
Yeah, we just, you know, we.
We came prepared.
Yes, we did.
We wore our, we're all, uh, blue and white proud here. Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, th, this is going to be a lot of fun. And I guess, uh, I don't know if you have anything else to, to add, but certainly here in Altoona, Pennsylvania, we would close by saying, we are.
Penn State.
We are.
Penn State.
We are.
Penn State.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, thank you folks very much. Okay, you're on.
Let the smack talking begin.
Bye, thank you.
Good night.
Well, thank, thank you Lyndon Victor for.
Yes.
Helping put that together. They, I'll tell you what, they, those folks are great people to talk to on the phone and it's just, I, I, I don't know why we didn't do this a long time ago, to be honest. So, this is, this is just kind of fun. So, and it's just, uh, I think we're going to have some fun with this whole thing, so.
When, uh, when we go out west to visit my wife's family, we always feel like we've accomplished a good first day if we make it to Altoona, Iowa. It's exactly eight hundred and fifty miles from here, right along I eighty. You go past Des Moines, you look to your left and there it is. Penn State's going to win.
Bill, did you have any more questions or were you done?
Uh, no, I wasn't.
Well, I'm glad I took the over.
Whose idea was this, um, bet?
Councilman Kelly's.
Gilty as charged.
And it was a good idea. It's going to be a tough game. That is going to definitely be a tough game. That is a tough place to win a football.
We discussed a lot of difficult things tonight and that was, uh, a, a, a good, a good way to, to end the meeting tonight, so.
The timing of it was perfect too, Bill, since we just jumped them yesterday in the rankings.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see that.
Yeah, the A P has Penn State at number four and Iowa at number five. So.
Even though they just beat Villanova.
We'll take what we can get, Bill.
Thanks for your enthusiasm, Bill.
Most of Penn State's players are not from Pennsylvania, which kind of upsets me, that's why. Tom, regarding the tax.
Yes.
The, could, could you explain how you, how you were using the word nexus? I didn't quite follow that, but.
Yeah, uh, nexus, what it, okay, your tax, there has to be a nexus between your tax and what you're taxing. Uh, and basically what it is, is, is for the, uh, business privilege tax to apply, it has to, you have to have a, a business location within the, uh, city of Altoona and that the, the revenue you're looking to tax is generated through the Altoona location. Whether that's by taking the order, filling the order, collecting the, the fee, um, that's what they mean by nexus.
Is, well, are you going to need to make a change to this to make it certain that that's, that's, that that's what happens or?
No. I, I, it's being applied properly right now. What council is alluding to is, uh, there, a concern that, um, you know, someone may be reading it, like perhaps someone who might be looking to, um, you know, begin a business venture in the city, who might have locations in other places outside the city and having a mistaken belief, it has an, it, it has an overreaching effect more than it, you know, more than it does.
From an outsider's perspective, Bill, if they didn't know any better and they just read our ordinance, they would think that, that they were subject to paying business privilege or mercantile on any transaction made in any of their locations, if they have multiple locations spread out over different states or different cities or counties.
Particularly if their corporate headquarters were to be in the city.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do, do you know that as a matter of fact that that has discouraged some people or that at least people have been mistaken or is that a sort of supposition?
I, I believe it's, it's been presented to me that it has been a discouragement.
Well, are you going to be able to make a change that would eliminate that impression at least?
Well, I want to take a look at the ability to amend the ordinance without affecting its overall authority. Uh, because the, the statutory provision under which a lot of these taxes were implemented by numerous municipalities throughout the state, there is like a, a, a deadline date, like you had to have your ordinance in place by a date certain. If you didn't implement it by that date, then you couldn't, you could never do it. And I just want to make sure if we, I understand where council's coming from. I don't want to do anything which affects the overall validity and authority of our ability to have the ordinance.
Not, not through the wording, but just through the date, like, like doing it on a date that's too late.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
It'll be quick, I promise. It'll be quick, it's true.